Welcome councillors, officers, members of the gallery and people viewing on the live stream to this unscheduled meeting of Swan Hill Royal City Council. Swan Hill Royal City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pays its respects to their elders, past and present. councillor Jeffrey, the dedication please.
Thank you. We, the councillors of Swan Hill Royal City Council, declare that we will undertake the duties of the office of councillor in the best interest of our community and faithfully and impartially carry out the functions, powers and authorities and discretion vested in us to the best of our skill and judgment.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey, you may be seated. Councillors, we have an apology from councillor Les McPhee. Would have somebody move that the apology be accepted, please? Move councillor McKay, seconded.
I'll second.
Councillor Jeffrey, those in favour, that is carried, thank you. Directors and officers present, we have Scott Barber, the chief executive officer, Leah Johnston, director of infrastructure, Michelle Granger, director of development and planning, and Barn Pataap, director of corporate services, welcome. Councillors, do we have any disclosures of conflict of interest? If not, we will move on to the order of business. First item of business for the day, item 2.1 on the agenda, notice of rescission of council resolution 2.1 reopen former drag strip site and lease options. Councillor Jeffrey, if you could read your motion first before we move into debate. Thank you. I'm just reminded to use your microphones councillors, please.
Thank you. Having given due notice, I, councillor Chris Jeffrey here, but I give my notice to rescind the council resolution CM 2024/144 as attached, made on Tuesday the 10th of September 2024, followed in 2.1 reopen former drag strip site and lease options. And replace with the following resolution similar to the motion put forward by councillor Bill Moore, and that council delegates authority to the CO2. Number one, formally advise the Chisum Reserve Complex Incorporated that it seeks to lease that part of the site that was known as the Swan Hill Drag Racing Facility. Point two, negotiate a lease of the former drag strip facility to the Skid City entity guided by the following principles: undertaking normal business due diligence of the Skid City entity, a minimum three-year lease period, council will conduct a consultation process if the lease is extended more than three years, a lease fee that is comparable to the other user groups on the motoplex site, ensure common access is maintained for all users of the motoplex site, ensure that there is an MOU, so member end of understanding, between the city, the Skid City entity and other motoplex users, acceptance of the existing conditions of the facility and associated defined areas, waiving any legal liability of council in relation to the condition of the drag racing track and associated defined areas, details of insurance coverage for all proposed activities, cooperative participation in the council's strategic review of the motoplex, no demand on council for financial contribution towards future development, that all activities and events are sanctioned and covered by statutory bodies. And point three, reopen the former Swan Hill drag facility solely to enable the CEO to hold exclusive negotiations with Skid City on the future use of the facility, addressing council resolution 2023/136 from December 2023.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Do I have a second for that motion? Seconded councillor Moore. Councillor Jeffrey, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Aduh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Last Tuesday, my vote was cast in favour of integrity of proper business process, yet the sleepless night that followed was a clear gut signal for my conscience that my decision did not align with my personal integrity or with the community's best interest. I kept asking myself, how can I walk down the street today, tomorrow, twelve months or ten years' time, with my head held high in the community, knowing that we have potentially cured any interest in private investment at this site? It is rare, it is rare to be granted a chance to rectify a decision and today I stand before you ready to undertake that opportunity. Since when I elected in October 2016, myself, councillor Moore, councillor Langham and councillor Leah Johnson, different, not director, different councillor, were elected in 2026 and some three weeks later we attended the official opening of the drag strip, which we thought and we felt it should have been a promising opportunity, but we have witnessed the failings of that project, a project filled with potential that has become a white elephant and a contentious issue within our community. As councillors, we are bound by the local government act to approach each decision with an open mind. However, the repetitive nature of the vote's concern in the drag strip over my time for eight years in council has inadvertently shaped community expectations around where our stance is may or may not stand. Community members advocating for both sides of this decision have made it well known to me that they see me as a deciding vote, regardless of how true that is, that is how I've been made to feel. This is only amplified, amplified, this mentally stressful and moral dilemma for me as it appears and I felt, and I suspect a pretty fair statement to make, that the community's advocacy efforts have been heavily directed at influencing my vote and not equally amongst all councillors. I've done my best to listen to all points raised to each decision before I made the decision on Tuesday and subsequently that night when approached by people and a number of people that I have discussed in the community since Wednesday morning. The mental turmoil and turmoil I have experienced is a testament to the weight of a responsibility as a councillor and it has been a tough decision. Since last year, I have constantly avoided any form of social media, recognising that the potential for one side of aggressive behaviour and ill-form would compromise my own mental health and my own mental wellbeing. I couldn't sleep after Tuesday because my gut, my conscience is telling me that I've made the wrong decision and like always, before making any decision, you are advocated by the community and after making a decision, more people who have respectful opinions that you would appreciate always come out and give you their point of view. As I said, I've also reached out to a number of people that I know and trust to test not only my conscience but that I need to make the best decision for the community. My contemplation has led me to a critical question, by rejecting this proposal, what are the consequences? My apprehension is that undertaking the expression of interest is highly likely to result in a lack of any submissions backed by private investment for such a specialised motorsport. This would be, in my eyes, the death of any private investment or opportunity at this site. And we come back to thinking, what are we trying to, what do we want for the drag strip? And we want it to succeed. And I know councillors have said that we will not spend any more weight payers' money on it because it's become a money pit for weight payers, but if the private investment is prepared to give it a opportunity, let's to give it a opportunity, let's give it a go. Today, with the amendments put forward for the decision motion, has been brought to ensure that I'm considering all sides of the argument and find some middle ground between the two. The hesitation of Skid City to continue their involvement months after expressing their interest and having discussion with council without fruition is understandable. The misinformation and heat they've faced within the community around their proposal has impacted that as well. To come to this point in time to say, well, I could have to offer, but let's change the goalpost and see who else is out there, is a fall of us as an elected councillor and I don't put that on the executive because we moved motions and made decisions to entertain them earlier in the year and we could have actioned those differently.
councillor Jeffrey, I'd just ask you to pause. Can I have a motion for extension of time, because I understand this...
Yeah, and I do request that.
Seconded. councillor Young, you've basically got two minutes left against the difference.
Right, I'll try to be quick. We must consider the minimal risk against substantial benefits. The worst scenario, worst case scenario, Skid City get the lease with private investment undertaking restorative works on the drag strip with no expense to the rate payer and they have publicly said that they have a million dollars for that and they consider only grant opportunity and other corporate sponsors. Considering the time, I'm going to skip a bit, but I will move to a key point, that it is imperative that the community recognises the diligence of our CEO and safeguarding against the liabilities and ensuring the protection of both council and rate payer's interests. I say this for the community's awareness, that this is not, that it's not to negotiate a lease with unfavourable conditions put upon council or rate payers and I know that council and Skid City will negotiate in good faith because council have directed a lease negotiation and Skid City want to get in as soon as possible and start work, but the community has to be aware that there are a number of elements here that they need to agree on and if that doesn't agree on, then that has to be accepted. How long have I got, Mr Mayor?
One minute.
One minute, thank you. I guess in summary, now I need to know, as do all you, that we have afforded the opportunity for private investment and given a failed asset, that failed asset, that has had considerable rate money invested in it, given it every chance with success. There's some challenge that this might be about saving face in the upcoming elections, but I say that I haven't been swayed by any online backlash because I haven't been on any of my platforms. This is around my conscience and how I've been, how I feel and what I feel is in the best interest in the community and I have to go with what, I have to go with my personal gut, I have to go with my conscience and I have to go back to my personal values as well. I appreciate the guidance and support from everyone, I'm pretty heavily on both sides, for and against any proposal, but I need to know today that when I walk out of here, that I can hold my head high in the community and I know that we've given it a crack, regardless of how successful or unsuccessful it is, but I do hope, as we all do, that we can turn something out, turn it into something out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. councillor Moore, do you wish to speak?
Yes, I do, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I do, thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillor Jeffrey for speaking from the heart. You've expressed sentiments that nearly all of us councillors go through sleepless nights making tough decisions and they are tough at times. I'll start where I, I'll just do a brief overview of where I spoke last week. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity councillors, to grow and expand the Swan Hill motoplex and an opportunity without further rate payer expense on top of the $646,056.67 that's been spent so far. We have a white elephant in a black hole and how do we, and how do we get out of that? It is pretty clear from the previous reports, the Swan Hill motoplex master plan, which I have here, the master plan report of 2016 and the previous most been of 1921, it's quite clear that without significant private investment or government investment, and we've got broke governments all around Australia at the moment, the money's going to have to come from, if we're going to advance the motoplex, it's going to have to come from the private sector and we have this opportunity. Those opportunities just don't come along that often in a small town and an LGA such as ours, they just don't happen to come along very often. And the reason we have this opportunity is because we have the only quarter of a mile drag strip in Victoria and there's an opportunity there to actually put us on the map, to have a drag strip and a motoplex, a motorsports complex that's as good as any in Australia, if not Victoria. So councillors, briefly, the issues, the liability issues should, will be addressed through the lease agreement and we're trusting the CEO with that to do that and that'll sort of centre around the Skid City consortium accepting an as-is, where-is condition of the track. Cart before the horse, well, logic would suggest that if the current incumbents with signed lease agreements are no impediment to the strategic review that's going to be conducted, then why is another incumbent there through this opportunity presented by Skid City? So why would that make any difference to any outcome of the strategic review? Councillors, I urge you to vote for this motion of councillor Jeffrey's. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity and could be the resurrection, the phoenix rising from the ashes of this drag strip. As councillor Jeffrey mentioned, we, the first day out there, not long after we were elected in 2016, it was an absolutely awesome day, a crowd so big I'd never seen out there or in any racetrack that I'd been to. You know, it's something that will draw a lot of people to this town and that's also outlined, the economic benefits are outlined in the master plan report of July 16, if you get a chance to read it, read what the benefits are to this community. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Moore. Do I have a speaker's case? councillor Kelly, sorry councillor Kelly.
Thanks Mayor.
councillor Kelly.
Councillors have a lot of unanswered questions and this decision has weighed heavily on us. We have an unenviable role in this situation. Here in Swan Hill, we're almost devoid of accurate media reporting and without the third estate, democracy is reduced. I'd like to say I'm very disappointed with the little amount of accurate media done on our decision-making. This situation has gone a lot further than it should have. The expression of interest process should have happened properly, it should never have got this far and created this much drama. In my opinion, the strategic review should have been completed before we lease out this site. I spoke strongly the other day against it and I see it as subverting normal process, procedural fairness and good governance principles and transparency. The issue's been used politically because we're brushing up against caretaker mode and we're treading on thin ice in that respect. It's the day before caretaker mode comes into place and we're making a very big decision with one councillor away, this meeting was only scheduled for another reason and we've added this to it. So the governance and procedural matters have not been cleared up. Can council deal directly with one of the interested parties without having to undertake an expression of interest process? That is the fundamental question today. Today is not, do we want drag racing, do we not? That is not what councillors are here to decide and to make out that some councillors are against the drag strip getting up and going, drag racing, the motoplex is absolute fallacy and fantasy. So we've heard concerns about the proposal, does the drag racing club support it or not? We don't fully know, there's a lot of, as I said the other day, divide and conquer going on. There's questions about the leases, that's why I use the word chaos and I've said to my fellow councillors, we are not ready to lease out the drag strip to another party, an out-of-town party that is not a local group, it's a very different entity. So we don't want to make promises and I hope that promises weren't made.
Thirty seconds councillor Kelly.
It leaves us open to scrutiny and challenge and the fact that these, some of these things have happened behind closed doors with only certain councillors privy to it, has hijacked proper process, ignored conflicts of interest, ignored governance rules, misrepresented council and intimidation has been used, ignored complaints by other councillors and a councillor can have a dark night of the soul and we do lay awake at night worrying about our decisions.
That's time councillor Kelly, if you wrap it up.
And yeah, I'm very uncomfortable with being here for a rescission and I want to put on the record that I think we should have stayed with our decision the other day and we should follow the proper process and the governance rules.
Thank you, that's time, thank you councillor Kelly.
For the lack of, a small amount of money, $40,000, Skid City has said that...
That's time.
Is the only reason they're in a hurry is $40,000 when they want to put in a million.
Thank you, councillor Kelly, you've had your time, thank you.
Are you going to vouch for the chair today?
Mr Mayor, can I make a complaint that councillor Kelly's made accusations against other councillors that we've conducted negotiations with the Skid City consortium behind closed doors? I completely reject those and I wish to make a complaint that that happened, that that, I'd like to register that to happen, please.
Accusations such as this, can I, can I just seek a smaller June and I'll just confer the CEO process for that, please? Thank you. Thank you councillor Moore, your complaint is noted by the CEO and will be dealt with and councillor Young as well. And that will be dealt with, normal processes after the meeting. Thank you. councillor Young, do you, sorry, do I have any speakers in favour of the motion? councillor Young.
I'd love to speak in favour of the motion. When I got into council eight years ago, we were travelling quite well with the drag strip and then in the meantime everything has sort of fallen over and now we're in a situation where we're...
Microphone, councillor Young. Microphone, thank you councillor Young.
Start again.
Now, we've gone into the situation that we're in now, but I think the two main things that the council has stressed about it is that any arrangements that are made now, that we have no legal liability by council and we have no more funding to put in. And we're in that ideal situation now and I think the longer we delay it, the danger of it falling over and not happening is what could happen. So I just want to say I support councillor Jeffrey in his rescission of the motion and I'd like to see us move ahead from here.
Thank you councillor Young. councillor Kelly, you wish to speak against the motion?
Yes, please, thank you everyone, thank you to the council and for everyone who's attending in the gallery, I appreciate it and your involvement and efforts in communicating with everybody. I'd just like to say very strongly that as a councillor, there has been accusations that those who have voted against are against drag racing or in fact commercial investment in Swan Hill and that is totally, absolutely not true. Swan Hill is a town full of economic activity and it's a wonderful place and the council in fact actively encourages investment. The motion that I created in December was in fact against recommendations of council because I was very concerned about, although it said permanent closure, we wanted a review of the motoplex so that the relationships between the different users could be negotiated in a managed and fair and sensible way that would ensure that everyone's rights were protected but also potentially to enable private investment. That was what we felt was missing and what we felt should happen, but what has happened is that this process has been brought forward and it's happening in a chaotic and difficult way where a lot of pressure is being felt by different parties and there's, we don't really have a consensus on the opinion of all the different users in a formal and calm way and it's very difficult to understand that. Also in the fallout is that there have been implied accusations that our executives have, you know, implied sense that something has gone wrong in the processes of council and that this has been a long and protracted process. The first motion came to council was in the June meeting to have us hear from interested people, that was not, as far as I understood it, an expression of interest process, that was for us to understand what potential uses could happen at the drag strip. It was undertaken not as a formal, not as I understood it. So to me, June, July, August, September, we're here in September, that is not a very long period of time to process that there are other opportunities and then create a process for those to be heard and I would have thought an expression of interest is quite timely in that situation. It is highly unusual for councillors to bring a notice of motion to offer or facilitate offering a lease or ask for, that is a different, it's not a situation that happens, it's not usually councillor's role to be involved.
Thirty seconds.
Could I ask for a longer period of time to speak?
Yes, can I, yeah, can I have a mover?
I won't speak for long?
Yep.
Thank you.
Those in favour?
Thank you, I do appreciate.
Carry, thank you.
I appreciate that, so I'd like the media and the gallery to understand that this is not the normal process and the main concern is to protect all the other user groups who are operating out of that facility and to ensure that everyone can operate in a good way. And councillor Jeffrey's motion in some parts enables that to happen, however, I do believe in competitive tendering, I do believe in competition policy, I believe that everyone needs to have their opportunity and we shouldn't be, you know, I think that, you know, it's highly likely that the professional and private person would have the greater resources, but it's important that our processes and our community knows that things are done openly and transparently and all businesses have an opportunity to compete for those things. So processing this situation is important and to avoid any implication of favouritism that could occur. So I do want the users of the drag strip and the drag strip community to know that I'm very regretful of the situations that have happened through past works that weren't successful and I have every wish for the success of motorsport in our community, which is a combination of the, all the different committees and groups that operate there. I'd also like to reiterate that our council and our staff are doing their very best to navigate their way through this difficult situation. So I thank you for understanding, we wish everyone the very best and I'd also like to reiterate that every councillor who spoke at the meeting last week, in spite of the different things that have been said in the media, every councillor who spoke for or against also said that this offer was full of promise and they wished the consortium or group, whatever entity, the very, very best and this is not the, what has been put out. Thank you.
Thank you, right on time, thank you councillor McKay. councillor Jeffrey, you have the right of reply because the speaker's against the motion, you have two minutes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Guess in response to some of those, so every time I spoke to someone whether they were for or against it since, especially since Wednesday morning, that you explained the picture around when the expression which first came in early January when we closed, after we closed the track in December, have heard around January submissions or some expressions started coming in in January, we didn't hear them until a motion was moved in the June meeting. And then we are here September, nine months after the closing of the track or eight months since the expressions first started coming in, that when I explain the picture and I explain like my, my internal dilemma around holding my bow as high and how I see it going forward, that they, they say this is a red tape that is blocking the progress for a potential problem with this and that's one of the, I said it earlier, that's one of the bigger barriers that I've got is, we've created this as an elected council, that undertook this and we could have done a lot of everything a lot earlier and had a better outcome and a bit more transparent. So we are here to just give an opportunity for the private investment, that council are prepared to put any rate payer money in and rate payers won't be putting any more money in, but we'll do separate way. So I'm happy to support the motion as is, thank you.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Councillors, the debates being had, we will now vote on the motion, those in favour? Those against?
Corporate division, Mr Mayor.
Division, those in favour? Can you write that? councillor King? councillor Jeffrey? councillor Moore? And councillor Young? Those against? councillor McKay? And councillor Kelly? Motion is carried.
I would like to move an urgent notice of motion.
Um, councillor McKay, we have, uh, an agenda with the next item of business, and, um, I've checked through our governance rules, anticipating this, because I had to be clear as to, as to where we're at with, with urgent business. Um, and under governance rule six point six, um, dot point one, um, if an agenda makes, if the agenda for a meeting makes provision for urgent business, then makes provision, bu- business cannot be admitted as urgent business other than by resolution of council. Um, so I'm ruling that based on six point six point one, the agenda doesn't make provision for urgent business because this is an unscheduled meeting of, of council, um, and only scheduled meetings of council have provision for urgent business. So I won't be accepting, um, urgent business today.
Um. Yeah.
Okay.
Um. That's very disappointing.
Well, it might be disappointing, but I'm just following the, the, um, the governance rules, councillor McKay. Uh, so the next item on the agenda is an in-camera item, so I will ask that...
Do we move into camera?
Yeah, thank you. Motion to move into camera. Second, the councillor Jeffrey, those in favour. Uh, but before we go into camera, I will require that the, uh, public gallery is, is cleared. So I will thank you for your attendance. Uh, and the, after the in-camera item, there is no further, further business. So once we go into camera, uh, when we come out, we will only be coming out to close the meeting.
So once we go into camera, when we come out, we will only be coming out to close the meeting.